You're all set.
All right, good evening. I am Mayor Meg Brineer and as it is six o'clock, I will call this meeting to order. For anyone outside of the village staff who is attending this video conference, I would ask you to please identify yourself.
Bill Nevins.
Amy Velez with CGI Digital.
Sal Rashford with Wallace &amp; Corp.
I will now do roll call of the village staff. Deputy Mayor Seth Harris.
Present.
Trustee Brian Marsh.
Present.
Trustee Tim Lane.
Present.
Clerk Don Hanahan.
Present.
Village Attorney Steve Raffus.
Present.
Intern Annika Fisher.
Present.
And with me here in the office is Lieutenant Ryan St. Jelais. On behalf of the village board, I would ask all residents that would please keep our first responders, all essential workers, and those affected by the pandemic in our thoughts and prayers. On September 2nd, 2021, Governor Kathy Hochul signed legislation extending virtual access to public meetings under New York State's open meeting law, which allows New Yorkers to virtually participate in local government meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. The legislation, which was initially implemented by executive order during last year's state of emergency, allows state and local governments' meetings that are normally held in person to be held remotely instead, as long as the public has the ability to view or listen to the meeting, and as long as the meeting is recorded and later transcribed. This statutory change will reduce the need for congregation at public meetings while the Delta variant is prevalent while ensuring public business can continue. I will now open the public hearing, which is regarding a special use permit application before the board to allow workforce housing and affordable housing units to be built at Five Elmwood, the location of the bowling alley. The proposal is for the current building to be taken down and construction of a 76-unit three-story apartment building. I'll open up comments now to the public.
Bill Nevins has a comment. Bill, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the trustees for the opportunity to speak tonight. I need to object to the 76-unit apartment complex special use permit based on misrepresented information provided by the developer and current village requirements. It is difficult, as a member of the community, to support a project for more apartments. Adding 76 units to the over 1,600 existing units will not change the demographics enough to bring back a grocery store, nor a bank, or entice other retailers that proposed building.
Mr. Nevins, it's Renee, the stenographer. You're breaking up. And nor entice other retailers is where you live. I've lost you. Whoa. Anybody hear me?
Bill froze.
Are you back, Bill? Because you froze.
How about that? Hello?
You can talk now, Bill. You're frozen.
If you heard me, I apologize if any foul language came out of my mouth while I was trying to reconnect to this meeting.
Okay, this is Renee. I'm the stenographer.
Yes, Renee.
Where we lost you. Existing units will not change the demographics enough to bring back a grocery store, nor a bank, or entice other retailers.
To open in the village. I'll continue. Yes?
Yes, please.
The village board has set in place a requirement that proposed building projects have funding in place. This developer is looking to circumvent this policy for a project that will not benefit the village. I urge the mayor and the trustees not to approve this special use permit. And I'm Bill Nevins, in case you didn't catch my name.
All right. Thank you, Bill. And I apologize, Lyle. I didn't call your name out, but Code Enforcement Officer Lyle Dumbrecko is also with us. Is there anyone else? All right, well, hearing no other questions or comments, we will close the public hearing. All right, so we need a motion to approve the board meeting minutes of the December 6, 2021 board meeting?
I move to approve the board meeting minutes of December 6, 2021.
A second, Tim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Card number 14, general, $100,019.84. Water, $13,186.86. Zero in sewer, totally $113,206.70. Payroll number 15, $95,270.97. And then we have, I have some transfers after this.
So move, fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Transfer from $16,000 from the contingency to $3,000 in police miscellaneous equipment. Economic Opportunity Personnel Service, $2,000. Economic Development Contractual, $1,000. Compensated absences, $10,000. From fire supplies, $500, to fire miscellaneous, $500. $4,000 for fire insurance to $2,000 into fire gas and oil, $2,000 for vehicle maintenance. $2,000 from recruitment and retention to $2,000 in vehicle maintenance. And those are your transfers.
Make a motion, Tim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to change it up a little bit. We're going to move.
Meg, I'm sorry. We have one transfer for the for the $35,000 from fire equipment savings account to to approve the costs of the the fire chase vehicle that was resolution 210042 on 9/13/21.
So move.
Seth?
Brian and Seth, one of them. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to change this up just a bit. Annika is going to jump in and do her development intern's report. So, Annika, if you're ready, you can go ahead and start.
Yeah, so first I want to introduce, I know for the past few board meetings, we've been talking about the village video through CGI digital, and tonight we have Amy here to answer any questions. She's the one we've been in contact with about this project, and I know some people had some questions about it, and I also put some more information in the contract in the Google Drive for this meeting. So if anyone has any questions for Amy, or if Amy you want to introduce yourself and maybe just say a little bit more about the program.
Sure. Thanks for that introduction. And yes, I am Amy Velez. I am with CGI Digital, and we are headquartered right out of Rochester, New York, so we're not too far away. We've been in business for about 35 years, and I'm proud to say that we are working on this initiative in partnership with NICOM, the National League of Cities, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So we've done this in about 3,700 communities across the country, so we're definitely not the new kids on the block. So we look forward to hopefully featuring your community, and I'd love to answer any questions that anyone has about the initiative.
Hi, Amy. Deputy Mayor Seth Harris here. And so I've been impressed with the work that CGI does. We've seen the videos that you did for Canandaigua. We know the product is first class. I think just the, one of the few concerns that we had, and we just wanted to verify. So obviously, there's, there's a cost to somebody to do the video, and assuming that we know that you will reach out to area businesses to ask them to sponsor. You know, you, I want to just confirm that CGI will take care of all of that, reaching out to them, and then if for some reason you don't meet the threshold that covers the cost of doing the video, that that won't then come back to the village to make up that remaining cost.
You are correct. So we have a very unique business model, which is why our program is so attractive. So we do provide all of the video content, the production, cost-free to your community. We are the ones that are solely responsible for reaching out to the business community and letting them know about the various digital media tools, the videos that we can create to advance their marketing efforts. So we utilize a letter of introduction. This is a document that you all probably will have in that Google Drive. That's how we introduce our company, our program, the benefits of participation to the businesses. And this is really the only document that we have that your community would sign off on, and it's really verifying our partnership, that we are in fact working together on this initiative. So that's really what gets us into the door to meet with a lot of the businesses. And then, yes, we're the ones that solely set up every single meeting, conference call with them to introduce them to the program. We do not have a contingency, so zero, 10, 100 businesses that sign up, it will always remain a free program for your village.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
I think Tim has his hand up.
Yes, hi, Ms. Velez. I'm rather interested to find out how the finished product is used and how it, you know, gets to our target.
Sure. So we are the ones that will provide a custom link, so your videos can be featured on your village's official website. You can also promote them on your social media platforms. If there's any other local entities that aid in the promotion of the village, we can certainly share those as well. So we really provide the product for you to market and promote it further. We don't have a statewide campaign or a national campaign that we'll be marketing this to, but really, our target audience and who we create this content for is potential new residents, new visitors, new businesses, but also providing as a really good reminder to your current residents about all the great things that are still happening in your village. So we do put a little bit of that responsibility in your hands as far as who you can promote it to, but I will say some of the communities we work with will share it with local real estate agents, with their schools, with other entities that, you know, have a part in promoting your, your community to outside residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Amy?
I actually do have one more. So there's no limit as to where that, where the video can be used for the year once it's, it's produced. So for example, if, let's say, for argument's sake, the Chamber of Commerce were to give us a grant to have it on all of the local news stations, that would be fine, and there'd be no additional cost to CGI for that.
So we do ask that the videos are used for non-commercial purposes only. So pretty much anywhere that the videos are going to be featured, we'd want to make sure that the local businesses that have sponsored the program are also being featured as well. We take that really seriously because they're committed to the program, they're committed to your community, and it really is a community pride initiative. So you could put this on a local cable access channel, for an example. As far as TV, we haven't done that with other communities that we've worked with. Now, certainly, is it something I could ask our executive team about? Absolutely. But even in terms of sharing it on social media platforms, we'd want to make sure that at the end of the videos, we had at least a clip that said thank you to our sponsors and listed via text who those businesses were, since it'll be in a different format. Did that answer your question in full?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're so welcome.
All right, so Seth, do you want to proceed with this, or if there's any more questions or comments, or how did you want to go with this?
I'm, I'm prepared to proceed, or I just want to make sure my fellow trustees are as well. I know it's been reviewed by our, by our council, and, you know, I brought up the only concerns that were brought up, and I believe they've been addressed. Are my other trustees prepared? I can, I can make a motion if the.
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, good. Then I would like to make a motion to approve the contract with CGI for filming, producing, and creating a promotional video for the Village of Manans at no cost to the village.
Do we, do we, do we need a contingency in there that there may be costs down the road depending? Do we have to leave that door open, or is that?
Maybe that's a question for Steve.
Yeah, I can actually answer that. So we provide the videos for a three-year duration for your village. About three to six months before the program contract is coming up for renewal, we will give you a call and go over any changes or updates that we've made. However, the program's business model does not change. So we would update the content for you for free, and we would then again renew any of the local businesses or have any new businesses sign up at that time. So businesses can participate or sign up at any point throughout the program, as long as there is at least a year left, so they can really get the value out of what they're paying for.
Good, thank you. I will then happily second the motion.
All in favor?
Tim, I think the answer to your, your question is, any expenditure of village funds needs to be passed by, by motion. So if you're going to put a contingency in there for the expenditures of any money, you need to include it in the motion.
Okay.
So we would just need a new motion when the, when the time comes, if there happened to be funds that had to be expended?
Correct.
Okay. So all in favor?
So we can do it at that, at that time, then? As necessary, yes. Okay.
I'll try again.
I think we're all set, though. Yeah, I think, I don't think we have to go any further, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Amy, thank you for coming in. We appreciate your answering our questions. Annika, thank you for all your work you did on this. Did you have other things you wanted to talk about, Annika, before we move, continue on with the meeting?
Yes, I have my presentation, but Amy, thank you so much for coming and talking to everyone. It was good seeing you.
Working with you all. Happy holidays.
Bye.
Right, thanks, Amy.
Okay, yes, I have my presentation. It is my last, unfortunately, my last presentate, my last update for everyone. Hopefully, the computer works this time. All right, let's give it a shot. Let me know if you can see this.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. All right, so for my last update, I'm going to switch it up a little bit. I kind of wanted to talk about some of the things that I've accomplished throughout this entire semester. I know I'm going to be talking about some concrete, like, projects that I finished, but I also want to say I've learned a lot of amazing soft skills, like writing emails, communicating with people, and during my final project, when I was writing my contact sheet for my successor, Isabel, there was just so many people on it, and I can't believe how many new people I've been able to meet, and I'm just really thankful for that. So first up, this is all the projects that I've been able to work on this semester, which is amazing. It's a lot. So I just wanted to quickly go through them all. Meg and I worked on the electric vehicle charger grant. And as of today, I checked the portal again, and the application is still in review as of November 23rd. My meet and greet that I held, the, working with the Entrepreneur Boot Camp out of the Capital Region Chamber, so I made this flyer, which the village can use for any type of distribution purposes, and got to know some people over at the Capital Region, and they're going to work with us to try to send over some more young entrepreneurs into the village, which is awesome. The CDTA Bike Share Program, which we are still working on. And so hopefully soon, by next spring, that will be put into action. The Summer Food Truck Festival that Meg and I have been working on, hopefully for the summer, doing food truck Wednesdays every week. The Junior Achievement Program that I connected the Manan School District with to implement for their elementary school students. And then my final project for my internship at Cornell, I had to compile, it was supposed to be a research paper, but we twisted it around to make it more useful for the village. So I compiled a 40-page guide for Isabel, the intern that will be taking over my position next semester. Everything there is to know about the village, how to get started, all my resources, everything I've worked on in detail, so that hopefully she can get started and hit the ground running and just take over all of my projects pretty seamlessly. And now on to the normal programming, the updates. Don't have too many, but, so I, we did meet with Honest Way. I know I've been talking about pairing up with Honest Way Co-op recently. And here we have all of the attendees of the meeting on the left, and Honest Way did bring up a few concerns that they had a tight margin that they'd be working with, and that they weren't really looking for any expansion projects with their current budget, and that it would need some more investments, like a market study, sprucing up the location, equipment, raising a lot of money, and they also brought up, because we thought about putting them where the old Price Chopper was, and they brought up how their reasons for closing and things like that. And then they were also concerned about some self-cannibalization with other, with their other location, Albany. But we talked to them through all their concerns, and Meg really did a great job emphasizing why the village would be a great place for them to expand into. And so for some next steps, we're going to look to do the market study, and I spoke with Sean McGuire, and he said to contact the Colony IDA, and that they can potentially fund the study up to $20,000, which would be great, the market survey. And then Honest Way will be meeting with them after the new year again, and hopefully, we will be sending out a resident survey to send to Honest Way. Meg, or Seth, or anyone else, did you want to ju- jump in on any other additions to what I have here, if I missed anything?
Just that they all followed up and thanked us for the meeting, and look forward to meeting with us again in January. And I did reach out to Sean. We're going back and forth right now about to see if the study, the food access study we already did for the village would be enough for the information that we're looking for, and he was going to look over the food access study and then get back to me. Awesome.
And I think, I think that this was probably one of the most promising meetings that we've had in a while. Yes, there were certainly concerns that were brought up, and, you know, this is far from any kind of done deal, but certainly, the, the fact that we had as many high-level people on this meeting as, as we did, and the fact that we did receive a lot of positive feedback, I'm cautiously optimistic that even if, if this doesn't come to fruition, that we at least know where we're going, and we can go the route of other co-ops if necessary, but I think that, I, I think this was, we definitely made some headway. This is huge.
Definitely. Awesome. Okay, moving forward, I know last time I spoke about possibly potentially making Broadway of Manans a historic district, so Meg and I met with Kevin to discuss the possibility of this, and there are a ton of advantages of it. Looks like there's no disadvantages, so Kevin's going to be reaching out to one of his contacts at the Parks and Rec office to see what the feasibility is, and he also mentioned that several properties in Manans are already on the National Register, which is great, and that, something I wasn't aware of. So that's Albany Felt Company and Manan Park Historic District. And then some future project ideas, which I will leave Isabel with, that Seth and Meg and I have been thinking of are more grant funding possibilities. The EV Charger Grant was amazing and has so much potential, and there is a enormous list of grant funding opportunities on New York State websites, and just going through those and seeing what else the village can utilize. A Village of Manans iPhone and Android app. I know a bunch of other municipalities have this, so that would be awesome. Just for current events. Those are great. And then, third, the promotion of the Bike Path Connector. And then, fourth, creating a business map, whether it be like an interactive business map, or something that the village can promote on the website, would be awesome. And five, some more community events, something similar to maybe like the Food Truck Festival or community dinners, or something like that. Those are just some ideas that we had, but I'm sure there would be a lot more when the time comes. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody for a great semester. I'm always around if anyone needs to contact me for any reason. But I'm really excited for Isabel to come in and take my place, and she's amazing. We met in person at school. And everyone's going to really like her, so I'm so thankful for such a great semester that I've had, and just some personal notes about me moving forward. So next semester, I will be continuing my studies, primarily taking entrepreneurship classes at Cornell, and then this summer, I will be working in New York City for Price Waterhouse Cooper's, doing management consulting. But thank you, everybody. This has been an amazing opportunity, and if anyone has any last-minute questions or anything, feel free to ask, or feel free to reach out to me via email or LinkedIn or something like that.
Annika, I, I can't say enough great things about what you've done for the village. I knew, I knew that we hired the right person originally when we, when we met you in late August, but all the work that you've done really reaffirms that. So I can't, I can't even think of too many other internships where an intern can leave at the end and say, I really left this indelible mark on the community, and you've left the village in a much better place than it was when you first started. I think we're on a really positive trajectory, or as an engineer of mine once said, we're, we're now cooking with gas, and, and I, I have to, I have to say that, like, if, if we continue on this, we're, we're really moving forward with some positive momentum. So, so thank you for that. You were certainly, certainly the right person for the task, and, you know, I look forward to continuing your progress, and I hope that, I, I hope that you'll come back and visit us.
Definitely. Next time I'm in town, I will definitely pay a visit to the village.
It's been great knowing you, Annika, and I wish you all the best in your future, and you've been wonderful here for Manans, and we thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. It's been great.
It's been fun.
Thank you, Annika. You've done great job for us. Appreciate that.
Are we moving, switching back with Isabel now, or are we going to continue with the regular board meeting?
Um, it's, it's up to you. We could, we could do that quick, fast, if you like.
All right, just, I mean, we're still on the topic, so might as well finish up that part of it.
Sure. So, so I'd like to introduce our spring nominee for the Economic Development Internship, Isabel Smirstick. Isabel is junior at Cornell University School of Industrial and Labor Relations. She actually lives locally. She lives in Rexford and is a 2019 graduate of Shenandoah High School. And given that she lives locally, when she's not in Ithaca, she will be working part-time in person in, in Manans. So that's a very positive quality. She brings a variety, a unique variety of work experience with her. Most recently, she worked at Hannaford and Clifton Park, managing the Hannaford To-Go Department and handling issues stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic, such as low inventory, supply chain issues, and the resulting customer dissatisfaction. At, and she's handled that quite well, according to her supervisor at Hannaford. Um, at uh, and she, she's handled that quite well according to her supervisor at Hannaford. Um, Isabel at, at Cornell, Isabel is Vice President for Special Affairs. Of the Phi Chi Theta Professional Business Fraternity, for which she organizes networking and career skill building programs. As well as keeping alumni engaged with the fraternity. She's also a member of the Phi Alpha Delta Professional Pre-Law Fraternity, in which she participates in debates on current legal issues. Um, in her free time, Isabel is a rower. She rows crew and she's a triathlete and enjoys cooking and music. Um, we look forward to working with Ms. Smirstick this semester on a number of economic development projects. Building upon the foundation and successes that have been laid this fall. I'm confident that she's the right choice for this position and I believe that if we approve her, that. Um, that we will continue cooking with gas. So with that said, I move to approve Isabel Smirstick. Uh, to be our Economic Development Intern, beginning January third and working through May twentieth.
I'll second that motion. Tim?
Ball in favor?
Hi.
opposed? And is she on the call?
Uh, yeah, are you there, Isabel?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you wanna say a, a few words?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, so like Seth said, I'm a junior also in the School of Industrial Labor Relations. Um, like Annika, um, I was really drawn to the internship just because of how much hands-on work you get to do. And like he said, I do get to live. I live locally, so I would be able to come in person a few times during the semester. So that was really um, enticing to me. And after meeting with Annika and seeing everything that she was able to do in just her short time here. It sounds like it's gonna be a really, really interesting and fun time, and I'm really looking forward to this opportunity.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
Welcome. You'll get to, get to use your creative wheels in uh, in this internship. So, welcome to Menans, Isabel.
Alright, so did the board have any discussion they wanted to have tonight about the special use permit or are we?
Yes. Um, sorry, um. I've been reading through some of the documents that, that have been provided and, and uh. Uh, trying to make sense of, of uh, some of the answers to some of the ten items that are the tenants. Of what would uh, qualify for. Approval of a special use permit. And uh, and I'm, I'm struggling with them. Um, and uh, I just, I just wanna go over some of them with the board before I, you know, be- before. Uh, we take action on this. I, I guess. My personal opinion is this is a cut and paste of what was proposed several years ago. Um, and um. The, you know, the, the, the things that were sent to us uh, from the last meeting to. Help us with some of the questions, uh, specifically those about noise. The noise report, for instance, that I reviewed, it basically said that the noise for this building is loud. Um, and um. You know, uh, my colleague Tim lives not too far from this location and I'm sure he can attest. Uh, even further away from where this building would be located. It, it can be very loud.
Yeah, the, the three seventy eight can be rather loud, especially with, you know, trucks and motorcycles and so on. So. And uh, this building would be far closer than, than I am by probably a good two hundred yards.
So, you know, th- that concerns me because you're reporting housing very close to a highway. Uh, the only way to mitigate that would be to provide a very thorough blazing. That would mean that the, these, these residents would never be able to open their windows. Uh, especially during the summer when that road noise, I can assure you, is most definitely at its worst. So, there's one issue. Um, I read through the narrative about public transportation and I, I don't understand. How you can say that this, this project is close i- to public transportation. Um, I walked it from the bowling alley all the way around and. It took me seventeen minutes to get from the front door of the bowling alley all the way around down uh. You, you know, down to Broadway. Um, so I understand that part of this is to. Potentially put a connector of some kind through the park that exists, the villages uh, Ganser's um. Oh, uh, Switzer Park, but um. Again, I think, I think it's a stretch uh, to say that this is convenient for public transportation. Convenient for public transportation to me. Would be on Broadway. That's public transportation friendly. Um. So I, I guess, you know, uh. The, the special use permit especially um, is a stretch. We've done this very comprehensive plan and laid out where we think the best. Place for the pieces that. Are yet to be filled, uh, what they should be filled with. It was extremely exhaustive. It was very thorough. And here, one of the first major projects that we're going to approve. Is basically in disharmony with that plan. Um. I personally feel that this is, is a project that's being forced. And as somebody who is very pro, very pro-housing as a Realtor. Um, and certainly not at all an objection to affordable or uh, senior housing. Or workforce housing or any of those things. I think as a, as a uh, you know, a- as a Realtor. To look at this as a prime versus subprime location, this is definitely a subprime location for I think what, what's trying to be built here. So I am not in favor of this. Um, and so I'd like to see what else uh, the board. Uh, my colleagues feel and bring this to a motion.
Well, I, I'd like to mention that I, I, you know, i- as much as I like the idea of, of uh. You know, uh, affordable housing, um. I, I have to agree with Brian. I don't see this as a good fit for that purpose. Uh, the. Even aside from, from what we're looking to do in the comprehensive plan, which as you said, it doesn't fit that. There, there are gonna be a good portion of these people who, who would not have vehicles. So they would have to rely on public transportation. We don't have a very good close access to, to shopping facilities. Um, and then the other concern is, is for emergency vehicles going in and out. Uh, you know, up, they'd have to come down Broadway, up Hart's Lane and around. It's, it's a. It's an odd little trip, especially if you're, if you're gonna rely on Colony EMS. It's not gonna be a very intuitive traverse. To go in that direction. And I just see that being problematic to some extent. Um, but yeah, to, to, to run counter to what was already, you know, it's a light industrial. It's generally a fairly high bar. Uh, to get a special, a special use. And I don't, I don't feel that that, you know, that bar's been reached in this situation.
Um, and I, I wanna chime in there. So I agree with my colleagues. Um, but my, my biggest concern, uh, so I'm, let's just for argument's sake, assume that you addressed. Uh, everything that trustee Marsh and trustee Lane uh, brought up and uh, that. All of those were uh, ended up being fine. My, my issue is that the comparables that were in. The um, in the report that we received weren't actually comparables. Um, they weren't, they, they weren't comparable by, by any means. I mean, Starbuck Island um, is. You know, th- those are really high-end apartments. Um, you know, the lofts, all of those were high-end apartments. And those, y- you can't say that, you know, those are full and this is uh, what they've brought in would. Would do the same thing for Menans because they're no- nothing alike. That would be like me. Wanting to put my house on the market and using um, sage estates as a comparable. Um, it's, it's not. So I guess I, my concern is that the report itself is flawed. Um, and I would wanna see a more accurate report before I could, I could vote to approve it.
Okay, um. And I think just to reiterate, I, it's not so much the project itself as it is the location. So if there was another area in the village. You know, maybe along Broadway or somewhere along the bus line, that would be easier to access. You know, I think we'd be talking differently right now, but I think in general, it's the location. Um, Sal, did you wanna comment on any of the comments that were made?
Yes, please, if you allow me. I, uh, I think I'm unmuted. So, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I like to uh, start by responding to the comments made by Mr. Eric Nevins. Um, he used the word misrepresentation. I deny that hundred percent. There has been no misrepresentation from us. I believe in speaking the truth and everything I've given is the truth. There is no embellishment, no misrepresentation. I signed the contract for uh, affordable housing. I can give a copy to the village. Uh, when I went into contract with Mr. Joseph DeVito, DeVivo. And um, and that's what our goal has been. Uh, so I completely deny uh, that there has been any misrepresentation. That was a false statement. So um, now, as far as other comments. Uh, so the main overarching, my overarching comment is that the site was previously granted um. A special use permit for housing. So that's my overarching comment uh, to, and then um, underneath that. Uh, I like to say that, I said, I wrote some things on my, the um. Yeah, so all we, so there was, the site was previously uh, granted a special use permit for another developer. Um, um, for housing. So all we are trying to do is instead of. Market rate housing that was previously approved for is we're saying, okay, workforce housing and affordable housing. So the, and it's only one and two bedroom units. These are not three bedrooms where you have large families. So these are again. Uh, the younger folks, individuals, small families. But the only thing different being their incomes. Right? So this is uh, affordable as opposed to free market. That's the only difference. Otherwise, it is housing. Uh, the other thing I like to say is that the, the market study that I gave uh, uh, is made by the most prominent. Firm that does work for the New York State Housing Finance Agency and New York State HCR. The state actually uses the same firm called Newmark Knight Frank. So um, and then I'm telling you the truth. So I use the same firm because uh, they, the state is used to seeing their reports and the data. They rely on it. They trust it. So I object that it's, it's flawed. It's a, what they did was they did a comprehensive study. So I paid them. For a comprehensive study that has uh, market rate, that has data on market rates. And that's why you're seeing the Starbucks Island and all the other things. In there. But it, it also has a section called affordable. Uh, and, and if you look at those pages. It shows you the, so it shows you the demand for market rate units in Menans. And it shows you the demand for affordable uh, and workforce units in Menan. And if you look at the uh. Workforce and affordable section, I can point you to that. It shows, it clearly says that five hundred workforce and uh, affordable units are needed. Uh, in, in Menans, is that, you know, in that location. So this will only address only seventy-six out of the five hundred that I needed. Uh, regarding the noise study, I would like to say that uh. It was based on the old, the previously approved design, which, which showed three buildings. And one of the three buildings was closer to Route three seventy-eight. So, based on the old building layout with the three buildings and one building being close to three seventy-eight, it showed a composite. Uh, noise level of sixty-six point six percent. And I'm very confident. That uh, if I was to go back to that same firm with the, given the new design where we have taken. We have made it a single buil- building concept and moved it as far back away from the highway as possible, very close to the property line. That the, the noise level will drop to sixty-five decibel or below. Which is okay as far as the state is concerned and as far as the federal HUD is concerned. They're okay with it. And the, the state, believe it or not, the, the state, uh, even if, even with the current level of sixty-six point six. We mitigate that in the design in the walls, in the walls and the windows. We mitigate that and there, and it's still uh, okay. But for, all I'm saying is that, once we, all I have to do is give the noise uh, consultant. The new site plan and they would modify it and it would come below sixty-five, which is acceptable. As far as the state and uh, and, and federal HUD. Uh, as far as financing, my comment is that, cause you know, um. Uh, what I told was the, is that, that for the affordable housing, there's a process that every developer follows in New York State. And the approval by the state is granted in the form of tax credit allocation. So before that, um, I cannot, all I can show you are, for instance, my personal financials. As far as the financing for the project, that will become from the state in the form of tax credit allocation. And once the tax credits are allocated, then uh, the state gives us a date for closing. And by closing, I mean construction loan closing. And when the building is built, they convert it to permanent financing. Uh, then I'd like to address the comments of uh, Mr. Brian Marsh. Um, so. It is not a totally cut and paste job. What, what we tried to do was preserve miss, the work of Mr. Dave Ingalls, who's on the line. And because he did great work as far as the site work. There's a lot of calculations and uh, the work that went into it. So all we did was. We tried to preserve that as far as the site engineering, civil engineering. And we proposed a single building instead of the three.
Excuse me, Sal, this is Dave. I'd like to uh, share the plan if we, if we could.
Sure. Yeah, you can do that, sure.
Could I ask what the purpose for sharing the plan would be at, at this point?
I just thought it would be easier for people to, if we're using it for discussion purposes, so we could, we could see. See uh, where the building, where the existing bowling alley resides and where the proposed building is, just, just as we could. Show it as a presentation to, I think it's easier for people to see it with a, with a picture of the site plan versus.
That, but that's not the purpose for tonight. Tonight's purpose was to hold a hearing. Uh, a public hearing with respect to your application for a special use permit. And the criteria for the special use permit is set forth in the uh, the village code. And there are, in, in fact, there are ten uh, uh, separate criteria that are set forth. Brian Marsh, Tim Lane, Seth Harrison, the mayor, set forth their issues with respect to how. The uh, what they reviewed in terms of the application did not meet certain aspects of that criteria. Showing a site plan, it, this is not a site plan review. Um, so I, I, I don't see what the benefit of this is in the context of meeting the criteria for the special use permit.
Okay, so if I then may continue with my uh, comments, then?
Yeah, the only reason uh, uh, Steve, the only reason I was trying to show was I thought it would be easier to, to, to. Use as a tool to uh. As a benefit to our discussion. So we could, when we're talking about the original building or the existing building, we would have something to look at while we were. Making our points, that's all.
I, I, I think what I would, you know. Uh, Sal's had a chance. He's been before the board on a number of occasions uh, in the context of. His application for the, uh, special use permit. If there's something new, Sal, that you want to, uh, you want to address. I, you, you're more than welcome to, but if we're going to reiterate things that have been said in the past. Uh, at the three or four times where you've met with the board, um, this board has heard all of that. So if you have something new. I think it's appropriate to bring that up at this point in time. If not, I, I, I don't think we should rehash uh, what's already been discussed.
Okay, I was just, I was just responding to uh, everyone's comments. So I was, I was uh, just about to finish up my comments on Mr. Brian Marsh's comments. So uh, regarding public transportation, when previously this site was granted the special use permit. So regarding public transportation, when previously this site was granted the special use permit, there was a walkway that was going to be made from the development to, that will lead the residents to the next street, which I'm forgetting the name, starts with a G, Glenwood.
Glenwood.
Yeah, and then they would walk on Glenwood and cross and then go onto Broadway. And then, and there's a bus stop on Horse Lane, very convenient bus. So we are, we were gonna use the same plan that was previously approved for that. And then regarding Mr. Seth Lane's comments, regarding the study, like I said, I use the top notch firm. The state uses it. I, I have faith in the study. The state also has faith in that study. It was just that it was showing you everything, market rate, affordable, all in one report. But you just flip to the, I'll be happy to tell you which page is to look at for the affordable part. And regarding the mayor's comments about the location, yes, because this location is what I went into contract for. And so this has been my focus. And, and the reason I selected it is I felt that it was, number one, it was previously approved for housing, for residential use. Like I said, the only thing I'm doing is instead of for market rate, I'm proposing it for workforce and affordable for the benefit of the community. And that's, I mean, that's all I can say about the location. And I think that with the bus stop being there, it's very good and it's also very accessible by car. And regarding Mr. Tim Lane's comments, he's, he said about emergency vehicles. So my, my response to that would be that, you know, the site was previously approved for housing with a special use permit. And that, so whatever considerations were given to emergency vehicles before, you know, it'll be the same this time, the fire trucks. We will, we will make sure the fire trucks are able to, you know, come inside, go out, go out again, shoot the water from, you know, from the parking lots. And, and Dave Ingalls was very considerate about that. He discussed that specifically with me, that the trucks will be able to go in and out and address any emergency at the building. Please let me know if I missed anything, but I tried, my goal was to just to address everyone's comments.
So if I can add one more thing, the, the most important reason that I am not in favor of this project is because since it was approved last time, and I apologize, my dogs are acting up. It's close to seven o'clock. Since this project was approved last time, we went through an exhaustive effort to determine what pieces should go where. And housing is no longer included as, as designated in this area. That's it. That's what's changed. So.
Okay. My understanding is, like I said, I'm not objecting to what you're saying. My, I'm just, you know, my, my understanding is that this site has always been light industrial from the beginning. It was never that it was somehow some other use. Even before, I think your comprehensive plan, this was a light industrial site. So, and, and housing was approved before, previously for another developer. And I would ask that if the same can be done for me, I'll appreciate it.
I, I have a question as the engineer. We were looking at this as an amendment to the previous plan. Basically very similar with the consolidation of multiple buildings into the single building, the three story 76 unit building. So as Sal stated, we're looking at this really as more of an amendment or updating of the prior plan to include the workforce or affordable housing. Relative to the zoning, has it changed from the, from the previous zoning, the T4 infill neighborhood district? Has that changed? Cause that does allow the proposed use. So I was just curious if that changed.
It hasn't changed yet, but it is under review. We're in the middle of updating our zoning regulations. But it does still require the special use permit. And as Brian said, since the previous proposal, we've then done a comprehensive plan following a lengthy planning and community, community engagement process. Five Elmwood should be, continue to be the white industrial, not high density housing as being proposed. So before, it was, first of all, it was a different board, but it's also, you know, we're trying to go through, as the money we spent and the community engagement that we did to get the comprehensive plan, to follow that plan and not to waiver from it right off the bat. And again, we are doing the updated zoning that we're working on through a grant process. And I also, Steve, you may want to weigh in on this, but this is not an amendment to the previous application because that was for the applicant itself, it didn't transfer.
That's, that's correct. The, the previous special use permit, one of the conditions which the board attached to it and which it's allowed to attach to it, it was unique to that particular developer. It was not something that could be transferred to another, to another developer. It was unique to that developer. And that was a specific condition that was placed on it by the, by the board.
Sure, understood. Yeah, I was just saying semantics in terms of being amendment. From our standpoint as the engineer, essentially we were taking the same basic layout, consolidating the buildings into a single building, same type of utility connections and updating that plan that was previously reviewed by the board. So very similar plan with some updating. That was, that was the point we were trying to make. I think Sal answered most of the questions from the public in the board. So rather than me being redundant, if there's something specific relative to the market study, I, I think from a noise study, the buildings, that was one of the reasons why I did want to show you the site plan. The closest building now is about 300 feet further away from Route 378. So from a noise standpoint, as Sal said, I'm sure that can be accommodated to be compliant with the standard federal housing regulations. And again, the market study, I think speaks for itself in terms of showing that this site is a site that could be feasible for supplying that need. But again, I guess we'd be glad to answer any questions that the board has specific to any of those items. So we're not, at least I'm not being redundant to what, I think Sal actually did a very good job as the developers in answering those comments and responding to them.
Well, I think as Brian stated earlier, with the criteria that need to be met, like on number four, the use will be in harmony with surrounding uses and with an orderly development of the district. The, an outcome of the comprehensive plan, planning process suggested that the future land use of five Elmwood should be light industrial and keeping with the other commercial industrial uses currently on Elmwood. So there may have been a difference of opinion back when this was originally done. But in the meantime, again, we've had a lot of community outreach, a lot of time went into the comprehensive plan. And what may have worked back then, according to the comprehensive plan, doesn't work now.
Sure. Our, our response to item four would be that it, that it does still form a good buffer between the residential to the north and then our commercial users along Elmwood. So we thought, I think that was our rationale for, for being a logical, the multifamily would be a good buffer between or.
Your most immediate, your most immediate neighbors, Dave, the most immediate neighbors are a paving company, a trucking company, a tire company. I, I, I just, look, we're, we're really not.
I can just add something to that.
If you'd like, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I've walked the site multiple times. So it is across Elmwood, yeah, you have like, so I was surprised that there's actually, is it actually like an office building, which is a lot of offices, like a multi, there's like multiple offices in that one building. I forgot the building number, but I took a picture of the building. And then the big building, it shows a tire sign, but there's no tire company there. So, but if you go further up, then there is this cleaning company. So there was a cleaning company and then further up near Horse Lane is where their truck sales, Albany Truck Sales is. But immediately next to it, what I see is going to be a park for the residents to use, a three, you know, three, seven acre park. And next to that are houses. So there's a, a lot of houses, a park. So housing, park and housing, that's how I see. Everything else is, across the street is an office building. Immediately across the street from five Elmwood is an office building. And the, and the one big building that has a tire sign, there's no tire company there. So, and that's, there's a networking, computer networking company that, that has a sign now. So basically, what I'm saying is that to the left of it is office use, to, next to it is a park and then next to it is housing and then road on the other side. That's how I see it. And one other thing, the only other thing I would like to say is that, you know, the, the bowling alley is blighted. I, I doubt, me personally, this is personal opinion, so this could change, who knows? But this is personal opinion that, you know, I don't think that somebody's gonna open up anything anytime soon over there. So housing is like the best use, like, because bowling alley, the building is falling apart. And for somebody to come and open an industrial site there, you know. So I think the best use is to have housing next to the park and then you have more housing on Glenwood. That's, that's the only thing I like to say.
Yeah, my only addition, additional comment to that is, did the comp review take into consideration the existing or prior approval as, as well as the current conditions of the site in the current zoning?
I don't, I don't know if they're here to answer questions, but I, I guess the point would be for either Sal or Dave, do you have anything else you want to say with respect to the, the special use permit application?
I don't.
Okay, Dave, do you have anything else?
I guess the only thing is, if there's any questions on the 10 points, we, we, we put together the bullet point narrative with the special use permit for, for the 10 points. So if there's any questions on any of those, rather than us going down and reading all of those.
Sure. Do any of the board members have any questions on the, on that, those 10 bullet points?
I do not.
I have nothing additional.
So the next, the next question would be whether, whether or not the, anyone from the board or the board wants to make a motion with respect to the application for the special use permit?
Yes, I would like to make a motion. I do not feel this is an appropriate site for this. And because the, these 10 tenants for the special use permit have not been met, in my opinion, my motion is to deny, deny the special use permit as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
So the, the motion is to deny the application, just to make sure we're clear.
That's correct.
Okay, well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, if I, if I could just jump in here for a second, Renee?
Yep, I'm here.
If you would, in accord with the village code, there's a requirement that a copy of the written determination or decision by the board be provided to the applicant. If you could provide Don with a copy of the transcript of the discussion, starting from the beginning all the way through the vote. And then Don, and if you, there's a requirement that it be done within five days. So I would ask if you could do next day on this and provide that to Don tomorrow. And then Don, if you would mail a copy of that by first class and certified mail to Sal.
You're not looking for the whole transcript of the whole meeting, right? Steve, you're just looking.
Not the entire transcript, just the transcript dealing with this particular issue.
I got it, yep.
Okay, good, thanks Renee.
All right, well, Sal and Dave, thank you for coming in again. Location, I guess, is key here. There are maybe some other spots in the village that this project may fit better. But we hope to, you know, thank you for your time and we hope to see you again with maybe another location.
Okay, thank you for your time, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Looks like up next is 45 Broadway, Cranesville Block. Who is that, Lyle, Steve, who's?
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody from Cranesville is on the call here. I don't think they are. I did have, got an email from the attorney for Cranesville. Let me just get to it. On December 13th, it says, just keep you in the loop, we're going to have Pareen, P-A-R-E-E-N-E Trucking do the demo work on the building, waiting on final numbers and paperwork. He said it could start fairly quickly. And they're working with Spectrum Environmental on a site variance and related asbestos matters. I sent that off to Eric Lyle and the, the mayor. I'll follow up with Bill, I'll shoot him an email tonight, the attorney, to find out what the status of that is.
Okay, thank you. 33 Glenwood Road, I think I saw Mike Weaver here.
Yep.
Hi, Mike.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I could be better.
All right, Steve, you want to lead this conversation or Lyle?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was sending the email out. This is, I believe, the, the property that the, the village is condemned. And accorded with 64-1, the village has to give the, the occupant or the owner the opportunity, it's noticing an opportunity to be heard on the issues surrounding the condemnation. Mr. Weaver, are, are you the owner of the property?
No, I'm actually still going, well, what happened is my brother was getting all the mail. I was working out of town. So I, my brother took care of everything and he passed away the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So I have no clue about any kind of paperwork, not from you guys, not from, from the mortgage company or anything, I haven't gotten nothing.
Okay, well, what, what, what is your relationship to the property right now?
Well, my mother owned it, then my fa, well, my father owned it, my mother owned it. And then it went to me and my brother. I moved out, but then once he got sick, I came home to take care of the animals, which I've been trying to clean it up and everything like that. And I would like to take over the property, but it's so hard to figure out the whole bank thing and everything else, because I have no paperwork.
Well, is there anybody residing in the property right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you, you, you do understand that pursuant to the order of the board, that you are, you are not allowed to live there, that the property has to be completely vacated.
Why is that?
Because it's been condemned.
How's it been condemned? I got the paperwork right in front of me.
What paperwork are you talking about?
I don't know why, I just waited a whole hour to hear everybody else's crap and I'm right here for six o'clock. I got it right here. Here, Mr. Weaver, on November 1st, 2021, the Village Board of Trustees ordered pursuit of village code 64-1 enclosed that you immediately discontinue of the occupation of the property, located at 33 Glenwood.
Right.
I understand the letter, I understand the letter. What is the reason?
The condition.
I understand when code enforcement came into this house.
Mr. Weaver, let me finish, you asked a question, I'll try and answer it for you. Based on the inspection that was conducted by code enforcement.
And that was when my brother was sick.
Let me, let me finish, okay?
Go ahead.
All right. Based on the inspection that was done by code, code enforcement, the property is inhabitable, it's dangerous, and it's been condemned based on the recommendation from the, the.
What's dangerous, sir?
Let me finish, the property has been condemned. You're not allowed to live there.
What is the danger? You can't just tell me the property is condemned, tell me why.
Lyle, do you want to jump in?
Well, letters, let, let, letters have been sent out for the last five or six years now. We have fire code issues with electrical, open J boxes leads leading throughout the whole entire house. We also have no working plumbing there, the plumbing that could, the feed lines that go into the house, they have no waste lines, what's in it? They have no waste lines whatsoever. They're, they're using a waistline, uh, and letting it exhaust out into the park. All which is all against property maintenance code and it is all deemed uninhabitable.
Okay, and then I talked to you already, sir, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
I believe I did. And I told you, I was not staying here. I wasn't capable of being here. I was working out of state. So now when I'm home, I come home, I get this letter under my name, which is very unusual because it came to Michael Weaver. First of all, how'd you know my brother died? And how is it coming on me when I didn't receive nothing in the future or nothing in the past about anything?
The, the property has been, in accord with the, the village code, has been properly posted. Your brother prior to his passing.
I properly received that, but he passed away.
Let me finish. Prior to his passing, he was made aware that there were issues that needed to be addressed with the building. This didn't happen overnight. This has been going on for.
It happened overnight to me, sir.
Okay, no, I understand that.
You don't, obviously you don't because you're saying it happened to him. How am I supposed to know? Am I supposed to go to his ashes? And be like, Billy, what the hell happened to the house, bud? I can't ask him. So I feel seeing that the name was in both of, the houses in both of our names, both of us have been contacted with a letter.
I don't, I don't know that to be the case that the house is in both names. Is there a?
It is. Well, let's say it's got a reverse mortgage. My mother don't have it. She passed away. My brother don't have it. He passed away. My father don't have it. He passed away. That leaves me.
Is there a deed which reflects that the property is in your name and your brother's name?
Sir, I can't even get a hold of the bank and you're asking me a crazy question like that.
No, well, it's, it's not.
So I can try to fix things here.
Hold on. It's not a crazy question because you're saying we should have put you on notice.
Yeah.
The only people, the only individuals that had a right to be placed on notice were number one, the owners and the occupants.
Doris Weaver, Chuck Weaver, Charlie Weaver, Billy Weaver, Michael Weaver. Michael Weaver is the only one here anymore.
Okay, but you're not in the chain of title.
The, the, the house went from right down the strip. Come on, man, you gotta know this. It goes from the mother to the father, right? They bought the house. When they pass away, it goes to their kids. So apparently for some reason it went to Billy because he got letters in the mail and I thought it was all for court. And that's all I'm seeing is letters from court.
This, the, Mr. Weaver, this has been going on for uh, probably the better part of two years. The fact that your brother didn't advise you of the same is of no moment. We have an obligation, the village has an obligation.
I have to go through this house. You know, I've been here for 25 years.
Let me finish. The village has an obligation to advise the occupants and the owners that are in the chain of title. You have not produced any documents to show that you're in the chain of title.
See, you want me to give you the number to the bank? And maybe you could do a little bit better than me because I can't get, I can't even get a hold of them.
Well, here's what the issue is right now and for, for tonight.
I have no problem fixing anything, sir. I really don't and I'm smart enough to do it. But without knowing what's going on with this mortgage company, what am I doing?
So what you need to do is this. Number one, you need to vacate the premises.
I can't do that. Where am I going to go? I got two dogs. I can't go nowhere.
You're, well, you're going to have to vacate the premises and then number two, what you're going to do is you're going to have to file in writing with, uh, Lyle Darmetko, the code enforcement officer for the village, your plans to bring the, the property up to code. That's, that's what has to happen. But for now, the property is condemned and you're not permitted to, uh, to stay there.
I have nowhere to go, sir. Nowhere to go. Where are you going to, can I come stay with you at a black lab with a beagle? You can't just kick me on the street. First of all, we're back in COVID. I just got over COVID. I lost my brother because of COVID. And now I'm stuck in the house because I got two dogs. You're going to kick me out of a house in the middle of winter? Because I think that's totally illegal. Especially with no place to go. Supposed to be starting my job back. You know, you, you guys think because you guys have all this COVID bullshit going on. It's my fault. It's not my fault.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
And I'm sorry that I got stuck in the middle of this whole situation.
Yeah. Mr. Weaver, do you have anything else that you, you want to share with the board at this point in time?
No, that's what I got and that's all I got because I have nowhere to go. I have no family left.
Okay, all right. Well, you're on notice of the fact that, that the property's been condemned and nobody's supposed to live there. What the village decides to do after this is, is up to, to the village board.
I need time. I need time. You, I can't just leave somewhere. I just came back.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what you expect from me. I don't have the money.
That's, that's not a decision for me to make, sir.
Well, I sure don't think it's my decision. I don't really have much of a decision on anything. Unless you think differently.
Do you have anything further you want to share with the board, sir?
Yeah, I need a notice before I have to get out of here. So I mean, I'm looking. Trust me, I'm looking. I don't want the stupid house anyway. I would keep it if they're for the right price, but I can't even get a hold of the bank.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know what you guys expect from me.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything further, uh, to discuss with respect to this at this point.
Okay, so what do I do? Besides make something I can't.
I, I, I can advise you on what you should or shouldn't be doing.
So there's all these people on the phone right now and they can't tell me what to do? So everybody is like stupefied about this whole situation and nobody can say, hey, go get a job or something, which I have a job. And I was supposed to just go back to this job because I just came home because of, with my brother and everything else. So out of all you people, nobody can say one thing.
We, we can't provide you with advice as to what to do. We can only advise you as to the fact that the property is condemned. You need to vacate the property and if you intend, if you intend on fixing up the property, that you have to, uh,
Obviously, I can't fix up everything that's wrong with it. I don't even know what's wrong with it. I, well, obviously I know that there's a pump going out the backyard. You just told me that. I could fix that. But I'm not paying to fix it. And first of all, they're telling me I gotta dig up half the road. How do I dig up half the road when I get a, when I can, when I can, a car can just boom right into the center of the road and now I have to pay a fine on the wrong side of the road and now I gotta fix somebody's car?
Mr. Mo, uh, Mr. Weaver, the, the board is going to take your comments under consideration and they'll decide what the next step is going to be. Okay?
Well, I need to know, you know, I, I'm, I'm lost with this whole situation.
You'll be, you'll be.
First of all, I have an officer showing up at the house. I got these pink letters on the door. And then no matter of a couple of days.
You'll be advised, Mr. Weaver, okay?
You got it.
All right.
Have a good night.
All right, um, so on December 6th, um, Chief Lacrosse had presented his letter of resignation effective December 31st. I will be moving, following a brief narrative to appoint, um, Lieutenant Sainte-Lace as our new police chief. Um, he has 20 plus years in emergency services that started in the town of Colony as a Maplewood firefighter, volunteer firefighter. Um, he became a telecommunicator with the Albany County Sheriff's Department and then worked part-time as a dispatcher in the Village of Manans. Uh, he worked through Albany County as a corrections officer. Um, in 2008, he was able to move back to his hometown of Colony and work as a part-time police officer in the Village of Manans. And he started on the midnight shift. Um, after a couple of years, they were lacking the handling of our evidence and Chief O'Brien asked if it were possible to work Thursdays to arrange his, the evidence, which he did. He applied for a grant. Um, the system is the same that we use, they use today, which is housed in the evidence room. While working with the evidence, he also started to work part-time with the detectives, working on various cases. Um, in 2014, Chief O'Brien saw a need for a, a third patrol sergeant. Um, so Ryan was, um, moved into that position. Um, one major undertaking was the Lexapro Policy and Procedure Manager, Man, Manual that took Chief O'Brien and him over a year to get in place. Um, they applied for and received a grant for the new fingerprinting machine, which is, which he implemented and trained the department on, and he is still the administrator of it today. And Chief Lacrosse took over the department in 2018. Ryan was promoted to detective sergeant and having worked on various cases, it was an easy transition. Um, continue to work on cases and administer our system, but also work with the chief second in command. Um, Chief Lacrosse saw that he was doing much more administrative work, especially when the new discovery laws went into effect. Um, the system he had set up a couple of years prior regarding the way we send our reports to the DA's office became normal for every agency in New York State. This prompted Chief Lacrosse to go to myself in the village board and request that he be given the best, the position of lieutenant. This was approved by us and he holds the position currently. Um, during his career in Manans Police Department has been extremely rewarding. And he takes great pride in saying that he has held almost every position in the Manans Police Department. Again, beginning his career in 2008, promoted to sergeant in 2014 and detective sergeant in 2018 and 2020 promoted to lieutenant. So I would move for the appointment of Lieutenant Ryan Sainte-Lace to the position of chief of the Manans Police Department, uh, with a starting salary of $100,000.
I'll second that. Seth Harris.
Well, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, and I'm going to swear Ryan in. This is a little unusual, but based on the situation we're in, um, we're going to do it here with everybody. Um, because of COVID, we can't do it. Um, and we want him sworn in before January 1st, when he will take office. So I'm going to do that now. All right, please raise your right hand and testify differently. I, Ryan Sainte-Lace.
I, Ryan Sainte-Lace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the chief of police.
The duties of the chief of police.
In the Village of Manans.
In the Village of Manans.
Effective January 1, 2022.
Effective January 1, 2022.
According to the best of my ability.
Of course, that's my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Don, if you want to come in, so we can sign the book.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything.
Congratulations, Ryan.
I got some people on here. Uh, thank you. It's a little unorthodox to be doing it over Zoom, but um, and I look forward to working with you and thank you, Mayor, for entrusting me with, uh, our department. We got a good one. We got a lot to do.
We do.
Coming up.
Indeed.
So, thank you again.
All right, we'll make it official. You can sign the book and then.
If you would, sign right here.
Congratulations, Ryan. We, we look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you, Seth.
Just want to wait on Don so he doesn't miss anything for the minutes.
Congratulations, thank you, sir.
All right, let us know when you're back in there, Don. Nope, we can see him. Okay. Um, so one update, we got notified, uh, the other day that we did not get the grant for the meters, but we are looking at alternatives. Um, well, we had, we've done a couple of meetings with the, uh, Bill and uh, Nicole and the meter, Jason from the meter company and just trying to figure out plan B. Um, it was disappointing, but we're on the right track with the money, the savings that we've already incurred. Um, so we're going to try the next step and see what we can do to further that.
Meg, do they give a particular reason or do you just find out it's a, you don't get it?
Um, I'll go back and look Tim and forward it to you, but it's basically that we didn't get it fair.
Hi, um, I've been casually listening to him. Um, the, the program that, that we submitted under is the Green Innovative Grant Program. Uh, water meters were new as of 2020 for that program. This, this program generally wants to fund uh, stormwater improvements and treating stormwater, uh, green roofs, impervious parking lots, that sort of thing. Um, funding water meters is, is, is sort of an oddball for, for, for that mix. We, we gave it a shot. We weren't overly optimistic. Um, it was a pretty, pretty easy entry into the, into the opportunity, um, but we weren't successful. But, you know, we can ask for a debrief and see if there's something we could have done different or, or what, but you know, you know, as you know, those, the, it's very competitive. Funds are very, very competitive.
Okay, um, yeah, I just had a letter from Bill Garvey. He was glad to see the repaving of Ward's Lane done. You noticed a dead bird in the parking lot of 250. Um, Don had the DPW take care of it. He's happy with us being a climate smart community. And he went on to, for his reasons for that. Um, and then he had also reiterated what he had already said last time about the red light at Canal Road. Um, Don, I don't know, you may have had stuff that I bypassed you on.
The only thing that was on there is about the property maintenance code. Do you want to hold off on that or, because I know there's still some discussion.
I just, uh, I, 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 I got Steve's comments and Lyle, I saw sent some comments as well. I didn't get a chance to go through them all before the meeting. And if Lyle will be in the office tomorrow or Thursday, or well, actually tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, I'd like to maybe, uh, find out what's a good time, maybe to sit down with him and, and, uh, discuss it.
Well, Tim, I'll be in the office tomorrow morning and that would, that would be really, really good, just to have a face-to-face discussion.
Yeah, that would be much better than, than email.
I, I think Steve, Steve touched base upon this also. There's been such a chain of emails back and forth the last couple, three weeks. Um, I know, I, I don't know about you guys, but I've been a little bit overwhelmed with it. Um, you know, and a little bit confused, to be honest with you. And I just, I want to make sure that, um, uh, when I do respond, I'm responding, I'm responding to the latest uh, information that was presented. You know what I mean, Tim? You know?
Yes, of course. Yes, yes.
That, that would be great, Tim.
Okay, what, what time would, uh, like 8:30, 9 o'clock or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in the office by 9 o'clock, Tim.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right.
Meg, you're, you're muted.
Did any board members have anything else that they wanted to talk about?
No, I, I just wanted to thank, uh, Tim and Lyle for, for all of your work on, on that. Uh, you know, I, I know that it's, it's come a long way, so I look forward to seeing what, what, uh, what you finish up with.
We'll get it there.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a legal matter and a personnel matter for executive session. Um, Steve and Lyle, if you could hang out, um, for a bit.
Sure.
So I'll need a motion to go into executive.
I make a motion to go into executive session for a legal matter and for a personnel matter.
Second, Ryan.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, Renee, per usual, we'll send you the stuff, so you don't have to hang out.
Okay, and also, uh, Don, if you could get me the audio link tonight so I can compare that against the text, so I can get your daily copy done, okay?
I'll send, I'll send it first thing tomorrow morning.
Um, any chance I can get it tonight? Because I'll probably work through the night to get it done.
Um, let me see that comes through. I'm waiting for, it's Google sent it to me. So as soon as I get it, I'll send it.
All right, I, I'll work on it tomorrow then. So I might not be able to get the transcript to you until later tomorrow night because I've got an all day tomorrow, okay?
Let me, let me check before, I'll give you, uh, shoot you an email if I get it before that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you. Good night, everyone, and Merry Christmas.
Good night.
Thank you, and enjoy.
Thanks. I don't know why, but my camera keeps shutting off and I don't think I'm hearing.
Uh, we, we can hear you. What happens, what happens is sometimes if your internet is lagging, it, it shuts off the video so that it doesn't, uh, so you don't, uh, break up for others.
All right, Don, will you stop the recording?
Stop recording now.